Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the April 16th City Council Meeting. May I remind you to silence your phones and we'll get started here. Roll call?
Richardson.
Here.
Garza.
Yes, here.
Magers.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Here. Next item?
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we'll have Pastor David lead us in prayer.
Let's pray. God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life, the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with, with character. With character and conviction, help us to listen with understanding and good will. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. But give us a spirit of service, oh God. Remind us that we are, we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders that your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence that your creation deserves. And finally, oh God, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. And we ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Amen. Next item, please.
Item 4A Motorcycle Awareness Month Proclamation.
All right. Tony, can you come to the podium, please? This is Tony Railsback. He'll be receiving this proclamation. Let me read it real quick and then I'll let you share a few words.
Okay.
Whereas motorcycle riding has become a popular form of recreation and transportation for hundreds of people in the city of Hutchinson. And whereas, in order to promote safety, there is a growing need for cooperation among drivers of all motor vehicles. And whereas, it is especially important that drivers be aware of motorcycles on our streets and highways. And whereas, during the month of May 2024, all street and highway users should unite in safe sharing of roadways in the city of Hutchinson. Now therefore, I great fast, mayor of the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the city of Hutchinson and ask all motor vehicle operators to unite in this effort to keep our streets and highways safe as motorists and motorcycles share the roadways of our city.
All right.
If you'd like to say a few words?
Yeah.
You're welcome to do that.
Well, good morning, council. Good morning, mayor. My name is Tony Railsback. I am here representing the motorcyclist of Hutchinson Reno County. I am the legislative director for A Bay to Kansas and the MRF Motorcycle Riders Foundation. And our goal is safety and awareness of motorcycle and try to keep motorcycleless and try to keep legislation in its proper perspective. So, which we both keep trying motorcycle legislation proper perspective at federal level. Motorcycle safety and awareness are a big part of this. The governor of Kansas, Laura Kelly, has also signed a proclamation making May as Motorcycle Awareness Month for the entire state of Kansas for 2024. Motorcycling is a viable means of transportation, recreation for many Kansans. There are currently 98,000 registered motorcycles in the state of Kansas. The month of May is when the weather warms up and many motorcyclists hit the road again. Our goal is for the rest of the driving community to take a split second, take a second look. It only takes a split second to look twice. Over 50% of motorcycle accidents are right away accidents, which many could have been prevented with a second look. I want to thank the city of Hutchinson for continued support in this endeavor every year for many years on trying to make our city streets safer for motorcycles. Again, thank you. Scott Marshall could not be here this morning. He has a job over Newton and his job got demanding of him this morning. And so I'm going to say a few words for Scott Marshall if you don't mind. He is also the owner and proprietor of Salty Cycles over here just a couple blocks away. Just wanting to remind you that May is Motorcycle Awareness Month. Motorcyclists are 28 times more likely to die in an accident than car occupants. What can motorists do? Motorcycles are a smaller profile vehicle that are harder to see and whose speeds are more difficult to estimate. Look for motorcycles in intersections, especially before making a left turn. Check your blind spots frequently and before changing lanes. Always signal your intentions. On a side note, he is also a big supporter of Third Thursday and he invites anybody and everybody to come on over. On Third Thursday, you don't have to be a motorcyclist to come over and have a good time. Get a, get a hot dog or a hamburger or a shake. He is also putting on his annual event, the 18th of May over here called May Ham. It's now turned to an all day event and an evening event with the band and so. Anyway, thank you very much, City Council, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one I have, Justin Combs Arbor Day Proclamation. This is Justin Combs, our Director of Parks. Whereas in 19, or excuse me, whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees. And whereas this holiday is called Arbor Day, it was first observed in the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed through the nation and world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil, wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property value and enhance the economic vitality of business in the area and beautify our community. And whereas, trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I great fast, mayor of the city of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim April 16th, 2024 as Arbor Day in the city of Hutchinson and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees and gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Thank you. Good morning. Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. I would like to invite everyone out this Friday for the ninth year in a row. We are planting trees at Orchard Park with fourth graders from Union Valley. So we'll plant 11 trees this year. The trees were provided by the Tree Board. They do have funds at the Community Foundation, the Trees For Forever Fund. So trees were purchased through that fund. And then we'll have all the fourth graders out from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. this Friday at Orchard Park. And also the event is sponsored by City Beverage. They provide refreshments for all the kids and adult volunteers after, after the event. So again, hopefully I can see everyone out there on Friday. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Is there anybody here from the District Attorney's Office? Okay, we're going to move on. I'd like to have John, you and the rest of your team come up, the Lady Dragons from Hutchinson Community College. I heard they're all on some V1, V2 visits and visits in school. There's like.
Well, very good. Let me read this to you and we'll let you speak and have some other things we're going to do here. Anyway, whereas the 2023-2024 Hutchinson Blue Dragon Women's Basketball Team completed the regular season with a 30-0 record. And whereas, the 2023-24 Hutchinson Community College Women's Basketball Team showed what teamwork, commitment, and hard work can accomplish. Whereas, the Blue Dragons won the 2023 and 24 Jayhawk Community College Conference Title with a 24-0 record. And whereas, the Hutchinson Blue Dragons won the NJCAA Region 6 Tournament to play in the 2024 NJCAA Women's Divisional 1 National Tournament in Casper, Wyoming, earning a number one seed. And whereas, the Blue Dragons Basketball Team led by Coach John Anches defeated first round opponent Cochise College 59-54, followed by a quarterfinal win over New Mexico Junior College by a score of 76-45. And in a semifinal victory over Eastern Arizona College 61-46 to send the Dragons to the championship game. And whereas, on the evening of April 1st, 2021, in Casper, Wyoming, the Blue Dragon Women's Basketball Team defeated Northwest Florida State 88-80 in overtime to win their first ever NJCAA National Division 1 Women's Basketball Championship. Now therefore, I great fast, mayor of the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim August 16th as Hutchinson Community College Blue Dragon Women's Basketball Team Day in honor of the 2024 National Women's NJCAA Champions. And this is quite an accomplishment. I did get to see one game. I think I told you I was coming to see what all the fuss was about. My parents went to almost every game and enjoyed you guys so much. So thank you for being a great team and bringing that trophy back to Hutch. We appreciate it.
Do you want to say a few words? Come to the microphone. Mayor Grace, you have something for him as well.
He challenged me the other day when I was at the ceremony, you know, he called me out. So I didn't want to not supply, you know, supply you with what you wanted. You guys achieved this great feat beyond, you know, the first time ever. So here, we wanted to make sure you got.
That's the biggest trophy.
We'll get mayor in here too.
Thank you. You know, we found that up in a corner. It's about 20 years old. We've been happy for you. Congratulations. Thank you for honoring us. You've got to say a few words. First of all, just thank you for honoring us here at this. You know, this is very special for our kids. Very proud of them. They did a wonderful job of not only representing, you know, their families, but our college. And they were a very special group. We've got, you know, two tremendous assistant coaches in Travis Kirk and Phil Anderson. So it was a very special year. We'll never forget this. And August 16th, or the 16th of April will always be remembered and with this group, very special. Thank you.
Do you want us to duck down below the desk?
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congrats. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good to see you.
All right. Next item?
Item number five, Oral Communications.
This is a time where we open the microphone up for anybody to speak about anything they want to visit with the council about. You have five minutes and feel free to come and visit with us. And state your name and address. Looks like we have a taker.
Morning, council. Cecil Weibel. I'm the Public Works Superintendent, Street Department. I just wanted to bring to attention, everybody, come in April 27th, 28th, we're doing our annual spring cleanup in association with Stuartsman's Refuge. Dumpsters will be supplied throughout the city. So dumpsters be supplied. I think there's 14 locations throughout the city. Few items we want to make sure nobody's putting in because of regulations with the landfill. Make sure we don't have any mattresses, tires, lots of tree limbs and yard debris and then household chemicals and large metal containers, refrigerators, appliances, other stuff like that. But city staff will be on site throughout the day, Saturday and Sunday, helping with the dumpsters. We'll have a couple loaders running around and some other staff helping people put bigger items into the dumpsters. And then Stuartsmans will be continuing throughout that both days of changing out those dumpsters as they fill up. So just a little bit of stuff from last year, just to give everybody kind of a heads up. We had halted 55 dumpster loads last year, which equals out to about 141 tons of material. So just an annual event we do every year to try to help offset. So want to make sure to get the word out.
I have a question.
Yeah.
If somebody does have hazardous material, can you tell us what they do with that?
Yeah. So if they do have hazardous material or anything else that's not supposed to be in the dumpsters, they can take that out to the landfill? The landfill does have a location for that and they have staff out there that will help them unload that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else have anything today? Hi, Stephen.
Good morning, council. It's that time of year again. We're looking to host another Salt City Fest, Outdoor Street Festival. Would like to do that on May 31st and June 1st. So I'd like to get on the council's radar. I'll be submitting an application for a street event this week. Very similar to last year. Would like to do the 400 block for the kids events, the treasure dig, the bouncy houses, the duck ponds and dunk tanks, that sort of thing. And then we'd like to have the adult activities on the 500 block and from the brewery again. We'd like to put a stage out and have a nighttime show like we've done in the past. And just wanted to, again, get on your radar and we'll get that application turned in this week, so.
All right. Sounds good. Do you care to share who the act might be or would you run away?
So far, we've got the band and Paramount again, and we're still trying to secure an act for Saturday night, so.
All right. Well, thank you, Stephen.
Yep. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for council? All right. Next item?
Item number six, Consent Agenda.
All right. Does anybody have any additions, questions, subtractions?
No questions. I've read these.
No questions.
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
All right. Need a motion in a second?
I would move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
All right. Call vote.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes. Next item?
Ordinances and Resolutions, item number seven.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. Council, you've got a proposed ordinance before you. The only thing that's really changing in that ordinance are the hours of Avenue 8 Park. Most parks are closed from midnight to 5:00 a.m. and they're pushing those back each direction. They're closed from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. An effort to try and address some of the issues that we've been having down there with those trying to make it a residence, those leaving property behind and scattered around. Along with that, there'll be a park regulation issued by Justin Combs as Director of Parks and Facilities. And it will be along the lines of a park regulation that says, "All unattended property present after park hours will be deemed abandoned and discarded by city staff." And that will apply to all parks and it will be posted, so there will be notice of it. The idea of changing the hours of Avenue 8 Park is to try and, and close it down sooner. It helps with law enforcement as well to review the park, to patrol the park and can save some substantial time. It's an idea. It's an effort. It's an attempt to try and address some of these issues. We don't know if it will eliminate them altogether. We don't, we don't kid ourselves that that will be a cure all. But we think it's a step in the right direction and we'd ask you to approve that ordinance.
Thanks, Paul. Will you go ahead and address the constitutional amendment issues around this, just, just to put on the record?
Well, because there's First Amendment and 14th Amendment issues. The, I'm sorry, Fourth Amendment and 14th Amendment issues. Fourth Amendment's against unreasonable search and seizure, which is because we're a governmental agency. We just can't pick up things and take them as, as we wish. And the 14th Amendment is due process issues, which are notice and opportunity to be heard. The notice will be the posting of the park regulation. And of course, if there's objections to some of that, they can take that up with either the Director of Parks and Facilities or the city manager. But those are matters we have to address. We've had problems before. We get complaints. We're underneath one of the bridges in Avenue 8 Park. There've been all kinds of items moved in there, mattresses, beds, miscellaneous, a toaster, even though there's no electricity under there. But, and we can't just go down without notice and pick it all up and clear it all out. This is an attempt to address that very subject. And we will continue to try and make things better because that's not what the parks are for. And it's, it's caused a number of our citizens to no longer use Avenue 8 Park. And we want to, we basically want to return that to the use of the citizens as it was intended.
Thanks for that explanation, Paul. This is a problem that we're trying to manage as a city. We're not going to fix it, but we're going to manage it. And this is just a very small step in that direction and I think that it'll help. Does anybody else have any comments, questions?
I have a question. I was under the impression that currently if HPD finds property or if we find property, let's say that we find a wallet that was left in Cary Park, just as an example, that it's documented and it's kept for a period of time. And there's a notice put, I believe in the police blotter or somewhere, that people looking for, for that missing property can then go make a claim for it. Will the property that is picked up, according to this statute, follow any type of notification or?
For the park regulations, no.
Okay. So is it, so if somebody like, for instance, loses something of value in the park and it is?
We're not going to just take things and throw them away.
Okay. So it's mostly things that are like, appear to be.
There will still be discretion exercised.
Okay.
That's not what we're trying to address.
Gotcha.
We have pictures of what we've been trying to address. I know council has seen those.
Yeah. And then how do people file a report if they see something of concern? Do they call the city or do they call non-emergency line?
It would be a non-emergency call. You can call the front desk at the police department. You can actually report it here. You can report it to the city manager, report it to me. We'll get it to the right person.
Did you, what did you?
So call Greg.
I guess the question is, what will we do with the toaster? Anybody else have any?
Yes, we are, we do have cameras installed there, right? Or not?
Yes, we're in the process of installing additional cameras as well.
The noscameras run 24 hours a day?
The police have access to be able to look.
Okay.
How do these hours differ from the other parks?
It just, it's just one hour each direction.
I mean, so, okay, so there's just a closing it a little bit sooner then. Okay.
And opening a little bit later.
Okay.
And signage will be updated on all of the entrances and areas?
And when do we expect the signs? And when do we expect the signs?
Good morning. Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. We're working on the language right now for those signs, so probably within the next couple of weeks. We do have to have them manufactured, so we'll get them up as soon as we can. And we're also going to make some temporary signs. So when we see an encampment-type situation, we can then put a temporary sign that has that language about abandoned property or left property. That way, they can't claim that, oh, I didn't see the sign as they walked into the park. So realize those are probably going to end up in Cow Creek and other places, but we're going to at least do our best to try to notify folks if they don't take their belongings, that we will be getting rid of them.
While you're up here, I was at Grandview Park over the weekend, and I noticed that there's no signage when you pull into the parking lot, or if you approach from the sidewalk along Fourth Street. There's no signage with hours or anything like that. Would it be possible to have the signage improved around there?
Yeah, and we need to really look at all of our park system and make sure that we have the consistent signage. We are updating our park main signs that, you know, just say the park name and those sorts of things, but we are working on kind of a standard look that we can put hours and those sorts of things on.
Thank you.
Hey, Justin, this pertains to all parks, not just Avenue A, am I right?
So the hours that we just changed are only for Avenue A. All the other parks are closed from midnight to 5:00 a.m. 5:00 a.m.? 6:00 a.m. 5:00 a.m.? So we just pushed the hour, we just closed Avenue A an hour early. So we're going to close it at 11:00, and then we're going to open it an hour later, just to give PD a little bit more chance to hopefully get people moved.
And the reason we're doing it for Avenue A is only because we have a lot of stuff under the bridges, right? We're having a little bit of problem there.
Yeah, we had several long conversations about it. You know, there's legitimate activity that happens in our park at, you know, 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning. You know, people are out exercising before work and those sorts of things. So we didn't want to blanket our entire park system. So that's why we're trying to target just the areas we know we have issues, so.
I know there's been a lot of discussion with the downtown businesses and concerns. This is an attempt, again, a small attempt to manage this problem. And I know that several of city staff have worked for the last 18, 19 months with a group, all of the not-for-profits, all the people that are involved in helping the folks that need help come to a solution or ways to manage this. And so if you think this was a knee-jerk reaction, you're wrong. We will continue to work on managing this problem, and we'll give it our best shot. And I, you know, I promise to those business owners downtown that we would certainly make an honest effort to help with the concerns that they have, so.
One final clarification. The abandoned property is not just for Avenue A Park, it's for all parks?
Correct.
Correct.
I just wanted to verify that.
All right. If there's not anything else, I would call for a motion.
I would make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing, amending the park hours of Avenue A Park and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item A, new business, consider development agreement between the City of Hutchinson and Superior Holding Inc.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. You have a proposed development agreement before you between the City of Hutchinson and Superior Holding, which is Superior Boiler here in Hutchinson. They've been a very successful business here. We have a previous development agreement with them for additional employment positions that they are meeting with the required number of employees for the benefit to be paid. This particular contract will be, it's within like six months of the expiration of the prior one. So it's into the future, but Superior is looking to expand their business, and in particular, expand its facility on Cory Road. And, you know, they have the facility at Fourth and Airport Road on the northwest corner, also on the southwest corner, and then they have another facility on Cory Road. And that's the one they wish to expand. And I might also point out that the previous agreement had to do with Superior bringing their Richmond, Virginia operation to Hutchinson, not away from Hutchinson, into Hutchinson. So we're excited that they are continuing their investment here, that they are growing their workforce. And city staff, I don't often say this, if you remember the documents I submit to you, I don't often recommend anything. I just say, here's the motion for you. But this is one of those I do recommend, because it's good for Hutchinson, and a growing business is vital to a tax base, and so it benefits us in more ways than we can name. So I would ask that you approve the development agreement with Superior Holding, Inc.
I have a question. This falls right in line with what we would offer any other entity that comes for our standard job creation policy.
And that's why I included a copy of the city council policy, because it does meet that. It is absolutely in line with our city council policy.
For any other entity that would want to do the same thing.
That's true.
Well, it's exciting that we're going to put more vacant buildings to use, more square footage. I assume there'll be improvements made to those buildings, increased property tax, more people, more sales tax. I think this is a win, and certainly money well spent. My opinion. It's just mine, but I have a feeling some others might agree.
I agree. I think growth for the city is vital, especially as we look at all the exciting things that the community is doing with conversations around the school, conversation around the YMCA, new housing. We don't need any of that if we are a shrinking population, but on the other side, we need businesses to lift up those people and make sure they're employed. So I think all of this all just goes hand in hand with all the progress and the good conversations that we've seen. I feel like over the past two years, but I know those conversations date back way, way longer than that. So I think all growth is good growth.
Thank you, Dawn, for being here and the work that your company does. Just another, just a note, if you read our consent agenda, 27% of our tax collection was sales tax. What happens when we move people here? People spend money. They spend more sales tax than we get to do more things. So anyway, any other comments or thoughts? I would certainly entertain a motion.
I move to approve the development agreement between the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, and Superior Holding, Inc., and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes. Next item?
A B, consider bid results for 2024 arterial street maintenance project.
Good morning. Jim Weber. I'm a consulting city engineer with JEO Consulting Group on behalf of the City of Hutchinson's Engineering Department. Purpose of this project is to resurface collector and arterial streets to preserve them and extend their life. City utilizes the most recent pavement condition index rating and other factors, including surface age, pothole totals, patching frequency, to determine project locations each year. And this year's project, the base bid is East Third from Main Street to Walnut, East Third from Palmer to Palm, East Fourth from Woodard to K-61, and Waldron Street from East 17th Street to Waldron Street North. This will be in front of the new hotel. Alternative one, it's an add-alternative, would be Airport Road from East Fourth to the Railroad Bridge. An alternative two is Airport Road from the Railroad Bridge to Avenue G. At each location, we'll include milling the existing surface and overlaying with two inches of new asphalt. The City of Hutchinson's engineering staff completed the design of this project in collaboration with JEO. The final plan set was reviewed and sealed by JEO. Project was approved in 2024 CIP, utilizing arterial, collector, mill, and overlay reserve account. For your information, there were two bids received on March 25th. The low bid was submitted by Pierce Construction, amount of $1,275,865, I'm sorry, $8.16.65. The bid is below the engineers' estimate, which was $1,386,789.59. Total bid, including the base bid, the alternative and alternative two is below the budget by $89,183.35. We believe this is a very favorable and competitive bid for the project. Pearson has previously performed this type of work for the city. In 2021, Pearson completed the arterial street maintenance project and the Apple Lane reconstruction project. So we recommend that the council approve the low bid and award the project to Pierce Construction in the amount of $1,275,816.65. Any questions? I'll try to answer them.
Are the alternate bids, so in case, in case the bids come in too high for the main project, or why are those alternates?
They're intended to be there if it comes in good, low, and then we get a little more work done with the budgeted money.
Okay.
So they're add-alternates. The key thing here would be the base bid, and then, again, the pricing is good, and these two, both alternates fit, and it's still under the budget.
Okay, great.
The substantial completion date is set for November 15th. Is that if we add on the alternative one or two, or is that for the main base bid?
That's everything.
Everything, okay.
And the significance of that is that basically after Thanksgiving, asphalt plants pretty much shut down, and we want them done before, so we don't have to hold this over to next spring.
Well, I'm just thinking about State Fair.
So the question, just from my understanding, is we're doing a milling process on this versus a chip-type project because the roads are in worse condition, or is, why are we doing a different type of?
I think they're in worse condition, but you also can't just keep chipping, because you just keep building it up, and then it gets too high for the curb and gutter system, so eventually you have to take it back down again.
Okay.
Any other questions or a motion?
I make a motion to accept a bid of Pearson Construction for the 2024 arterial street maintenance project in the amount of $1.275,816.65, and authorize the mayor to sign the necessary documents.
I'll second that.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item?
C, consider 25-05 State Fair detention project engineering contract.
Good morning. My name's Brian Clinton, and I'm the Director of Public Works for the City of Hutchinson. I'd also like to introduce Evan Patterson, who's sitting in the front row. He is our project manager on this project, been working with the city for about six weeks now. Super excited to have him. This is one of seven projects that he's managing for us and doing a great job. The State Fair Detention Basin project was identified as a priority project in the city's 2017 stormwater master plan. It impacts the east side ditch. The east side ditch is this greenish area here, and it drains about 2,800 acres in the City of Hutchinson from 43rd Avenue, kind of tracks this blue line all the way down to roughly Cary Boulevard, and eventually makes its way into Cow Creek. The detention basin, which is located in this red triangle right there, will store approximately 51 acre feet of water. And so that is about seven football fields filled with about 5 and 1/2 feet of water, just to kind of visualize the impact. And what that's going to do is reduce peak flows in the east side ditch, and also it's going to lower the water surface elevations in that ditch as well. In March of last year, the city and State Fair entered into an agreement to construct the detention basin on property that the city leases from the State Fair. That property is outlined in pink. You can see, so right where the tennis courts are, the spray park's right there, so this is the property that we lease. The detention basin is going to go in this area right here. That agreement with the State Fair requires that this project, this detention basin project, be completed by March of 2026. So we need to advance this project sooner than what we had shown in our five-year CIP. So the design needs to be moved from 2025 to this year, and the construction needs to move up from 2026 to 2025. So the issue at hand is an engineering agreement. The city sent out a request for qualifications to seven engineering firms, and we received four qualification statements back. JEO was selected to design this project based on their understanding and approach to the project, along with their excellent performance on past projects for the City of Hutchinson. The stormwater utility fee will be used to pay for this project, and JEO's design fee is $387,455. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
How does this, does this have an impact, positive or negative, on what we're doing for Cow Creek, or we're looking to do for Cow Creek on the south side of town?
This project won't impact-
No impact.
Cow Creek, right. If anything, the Cow Creek project would help with this, because the Cow Creek project is designed to lower the water surface elevation in Cow Creek, which the east side ditch eventually drains into.
So this removes the, is it three ball diamonds?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And then, and it digs them out? Does it, will it then be fenced, or is there any other type of?
No, there's no plan to fence this area, and we've actually been working with Justin to come up with some ideas to make this an amenity, looking at potentially putting in some sort of a walking trail along the outside of that. And that's part of the design process, part of the community engagement process as well, so that we can gather input from the community on maybe the best way to help utilize that other than just a detention basin.
Where will the ball fields go? I mean, where would they be replaced?
Yeah, and so again, be working with Justin to look at enhancing maybe some ball fields that are underutilized, because they're not maybe quite up to snuff. So we'll be looking at investing in a couple of ball fields.
Is this something we expect to see water in 12 months out of the year?
No.
No, no, it's going to be a dry detention basin, so it'll only have water in it when we get a storm event. And then it should drain.
How long is it anticipated to drain out after a big storm event, I guess?
You know, that's a good question, and I don't have the answer for that. Part of the project is going to be doing some modeling, and so once that modeling is done for what is designed, we'll be able to better answer that question.
Will it have a pump system in there too, for some, it will not?
No, it's not going to have a pump system. The idea behind this is to flow by gravity back out of the ditch and then back into the ditch.
Okay.
Sorry, can you go back? I think it was two slides. It had been one. This, okay, thank you. So for the houses that are in the blue area, when this project is completed, would this change, like, the FEMA flood mapping for any of those homes?
I don't believe there is FEMA flood mapping-
In that area, okay.
-in a lot of this area. And again, I don't have the answer for that. As we fine-tune the model, we'll have a better idea of the impact. It is going to lower the water surface elevations and impact some of those homes that are more adjacent to that ditch, especially in the area of 23rd and Severance.
Okay.
And I know one of the issues, I think that 23rd area is overtopped, even as, for a little, the storm is what we call a two-year storm event, or a storm that has a 50% chance of happening every year. Where 23rd would be overtopped, the addition of the detention basin is going to make that a 10-year storm event before that were to happen, or a 2% chance of, or 10% chance of that happening every year.
And then, one more question. You mentioned water levels. If homeowners have private wells, like for sprinklers or something in this area, would they be negatively impact, would their water level drop, or?
No.
Okay.
It will not.
It's just for, if there's a actual pond, I can't think of a pond in that strip.
Right, yeah. No, this won't have any impact to the groundwater levels.
Okay.
Mr. Clinton, this, this has to be tied into the local streets drainage system in the, that area, am I right?
Right, so we are going to be, so the ditch, let me see if this other graph shows that a little bit better. So, okay, right here is Severance Avenue from Thirtieth to Twenty-third, and it's that big ditch with the guardrail around it. So we're going to be building a stormwater box that carries water from that ditch over into this field, which will be a low detention basin. And then from there, we're going to build a stormwater structure that then drains from the, that detention basin into the ditch on the south side of Twenty-third Avenue.
So our streets up in that area won't back up anymore, or? They will back up a little bit, because how much water is putting down on the ground?
Right, it, it will improve.
Okay.
But yeah, during a, a large enough event, the streets are still going to, to back up with water, yeah.
And this will be funded through our stormwater utility fee?
That's right, it will be.
How deep will that pond be, or basin, I guess we're going to call it?
I don't have the exact answer, I'm going to say five to six feet.
Okay.
But it's all got to
Pretty, pretty shallow, just a
It will be, because we have to drain it by gravity
Gotcha.
Into the, into the ditch.
Or a motion?
One thing I do want to make sure we're clear on is that we haven't landed on if we're going to have a walking trail around or enhance ballparks, that's still to be determined, so I don't want to mislead anyone by thinking you're going to have both. We're still assessing all of that.
And it, it does say that in our
Yeah.
In one of the bullet points in the
This is just the engineering.
Yep.
Yeah. It says that that stuff is still to be, to be determined after.
And we lease this property from the fairgrounds.
And, and yes, and a lot of that is, we want to do community engagement, to see what the community would, would utilize more.
Is this a long-term lease?
It is a long-term lease. I believe it's ninety-nine years, and I'm not sure where
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five years, where in there we're at, but it is a long-term lease.
So none of us are going to be, we're signing a renew on that lease?
I, I will be, I'll be.
Go ahead, only negative, I'm, I'm a baseball, softball coach, you're taking my fields away, but it will improve somewhere else.
Maybe you'll get sprinklers somewhere else.
Yeah.
Something to ask for, anyway.
Maybe some new fields at Harship Park or something.
I move to approve the twenty-five dash oh five State Fair Detention Project Engineering Contract, JEO Consulting Group, not to exceed three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
I'll second that.
Hang on, Mary. Any other discussion before we go ahead and vote on this? Just making sure. Any other comments?
Okay.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Beggars.
Yes.
Cost. Yes.
Yes. Next item.
Eight D, consider city manager contract approval.
Paul Brown, city attorney. We're glad to reach this point. Want you to welcome Enrico Villegas. His contract is before you, he has signed it. It contains all of the scope of duties, hour of works, compensation, employee benefits, showing a starting date of, of May twenty-nine. And council, I would ask you to approve this contract.
Oh, you're recommending another item?
Absolutely.
Very good.
It's a banner day.
It's a banner day. Does anybody have any questions on Enrico's contract?
Nope.
How about a motion, in a second, and a roll call.
I, I would like to say something. I feel like we don't have any questions, because we've been, we've all been embedded in the process for the past fourteen months, or whatever it's been, and I, I made that number up, but, so if people are watching this as a single meeting, that we approved this, it's not just to get it done, or to rubber stamp this, it's because we've already invested a lot of time into the contract, into the interviews, into the entire process, so that's why we don't have any questions.
And, and I appreciate you saying that, because I just assumed that everybody knows that, but you're correct, somebody that just happens to tune in and watch this, they need to know how much time and energy was spent by the five of us getting to this point.
And staff, and directors, and
Yeah, I mean, I
Everybody.
It, it was very laborious, but we got, we got to this point. Do I have a motion to approve his contract?
I move to approve the city manager contract with Enrico Villegas, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
I'll second that.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Beggars.
Yes.
Cost. Yes.
Yes, and with that, Enrico is here today. Would you care to share some words with us, maybe introduce yourself, where you're from, and give us about a thirty-minute speech on your vision for the city of Hutchinson? Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council, Enrico Villegas, City Manager. I must say, this is an intimidating crowd, so, there's a lot of, lot of legends in the room here, so, I, I would just like to add that I'm incredibly honored and, and appreciative of your support and confidence in me to lead this organization. Throughout this process, I've gotten to know you all fairly well, and as well as staff and some of our community partners, and I'm very excited to participate in advancing the city forward. My family and I are also very excited and eager to start the next chapter of our lives here in Hutch. There's an incredible amount to do here, from, from family outings to the parks, it's just truly endless, and so there's a lot of excitement, and we're really looking forward to, to starting, so. Not thirty minutes.
Okay. Well, thank you, we look forward to seeing you back here towards the end of May, and, and hopefully we can solve the housing problem in the next week or two, and you'll have many choices.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you. Any other, any other comments by staff, reference Enrico?
You know, we're so excited, it's been great to, to work with him to get to this point. I will tell you that he's, he's energetic, he's inquisitive, I think he's forward-thinking, he really takes the whole scope of what's good for the city, and asks fantastic questions, and is very curious about how we can continue to keep the momentum and moving the city forward. So I'm extremely excited as to watching all the positive things that are going to unfold in the years to come here. So I'm really excited for everything you're going to be doing, and everything that is going to come forward from all the work you're putting in. So I appreciate the fact that you've come forward and, and willing to do the work, and I can't wait to watch all the fantastic things that are going to unfold.
I noticed you said watch, as in like, not participate any longer.
I, as I've always stated, I'm here to help, whatever's needed to make sure that the foundation is strong, we continue the progress.
And we can't thank you enough for stepping up.
Yes. Thank you, Mary Grace, next item.
Reported by city officials, item number nine.
Steve?
Okay. Well, I just found out that the, just by listening to everybody, the cleanup is supposed to be on the twenty-seventh. I was planning to have my meeting on the twenty-seventh. I haven't decided what we're going to do, because probably half my neighborhood will be at this cleanup, so, oh gosh, they've been on to me about doing the meeting. I'm gonna go ahead, they can go to my meeting in the morning, go clean up in the afternoon, I guess. So I'm gonna go ahead and have the meeting at nine o'clock, at the Zone, eight oh two East Avenue B, at nine o'clock on the twenty-seventh. So like, for everybody, we haven't had it in a while, so I'm gonna go ahead and have that meeting, see if I can get one person to show up, that'd be a victory. So I'll go ahead and have that. The founders will be involved in the cleanup, they told me they're going to do the cleanup on, they're going to start cleanup. Are you going to have those things out there on the twenty-seventh, no sooner, right?
I believe they're actually going to be placed Friday, Friday evening, Saturday morning.
I see. Okay. Well, other than that, we were, we were supposed to have a cleanup on the twenty-seventh, but we're going to go have the Zone meeting on the twenty-seventh. And for that, Mr. Enrico, glad you're here, it's been a long time to get us up to this point, and I, again, tell my city commissioners, who have been with me, while I've been with them, I did a hard job, if you haven't believed it, we gave up a lot of time, and now it's time to move forward, it's time to get going, get this Hutchinson going, and I'm happy to be here with Enrico and my fellow members. That's all I have to say, thank you.
John?
Yeah, so I have a couple of things. One, I had a, a town hall for people that have moved to Hutchinson this last month, and I, I thought, we had about thirty people, I think, at the peak, it was about two and a half hours, it's really turned into just kind of an open forum discussion, a lot of it in regards to lack of things for teenagers, or lack of opportunities to get into facilities and costs, and things that are prohibiting them, especially gym, gym locations. We talked about a few things in regards to internet access in, in public areas, other ideas in regards to what brings people to Hutchinson, that they can work remote. We had, I do want to bring back up the topic of city meeting times, I want to get back on that topic, and see if we can get that figured out soon. I would like to note that we've had a lot of comments on mowing, and there's a couple items that are commented on that, I'd like to have a healthy discussion on that as well. So people, there are a lot of people that are complaining both directions, one is lawns aren't being taken care of, weeds and, and items aren't being taken care of, and on the opposite, there are people that have difficulties taking care of their yards. And I don't know if it's a sign of the times, where community members don't help out their neighbors as much, I don't know. Some people are of the opinion that the cost for the city to come in and mow is extreme, but the city is not a lawn service, it is, it is not, something where it should not be a business case to just have the city take care of my yard. I actually think that on commercial properties, based on the cost structure on commercial properties, it is a business case to go ahead and let the city mow it, if, especially if it's a large yacht, lot, so I think there could be some massaging in regards to commercial properties, especially large lots. Another comment that comes up is, maybe I should mow the city's property, if the grass is too high, send the city a bill. And, and I understand the pushback on that, and I would comment that a lot of the city properties, not as much as the parks necessarily, but there are a lot of city properties that are in low-lying areas, where do you think your yards drain to? And that can be very difficult to mow certain times of year. We also try to level load what we have for budgeted help to mow. We can increase the amount of people and seasonal help to mow, and up that budget quite a bit, and then we have to decide where's that money come from. So it's on us to try to find a middle ground, and there will be some properties that probably, the grass gets a little high, there'll be some properties that are probably looked at and taken care of easier, because it's easier access, because it's not lowland. But these are discussions to have, and people should understand some of these things. Same topic of mowing, now that we're getting into that, and it's Motorcycle Awareness Month, people need to be aware, if they're mowing their grass out into the street, please, clean it up, it's unsafe for people on motorcycles and bicycles, for that matter. And then I would invite people to review some of the city ordinances, especially Chapter Eight, in regards to downtown maintenance. Some of the weed and grass codes are actually state-derived, for not just weeds, not necessarily the city. But it's important to just review these every now and then, there's some that make, that surprise me, you know, going back to the sidewalks, technically per city code, you have twelve hours to clear a sidewalk after a snow event, Monday through Saturday. And maintenance of sidewalks is actually a state statute for our city, it's not derived for the city, that it's on you to repair and maintain your sidewalk in front of your And I would actually, there's actually a commercial property maintenance for downtown corridor, I would like to look at, for our team to look at some of those guidelines for the downtown corridor, and see if we want to apply that to commercial properties in general. We have a lot of commercial properties that are owned by out-of-town ownership that are not being maintained properly, and I think it would be an easy adjustment to apply the same rules for the downtown maintenance to commercial properties in general, for buildings. I think I've spoken enough, so I'll pass.
All right, Stacy?
I'm, tomorrow is the Civics Be, we have about, I think, twenty Reno County sixth, seventh, and eighth graders who will be participating, it starts at twelve at Stringer Fine Arts Center, these students have all written essays and studied, and so they will be put through the wringer, if you will, tomorrow. It's public, it's open to the public, and free to get in, right? Okay. And free to get in, so it should be some good entertainment. I will be judging, so please come, and there's no heckling, though, sorry. I saw that in the state legislature, there was a bill introduced to allow permanent seat from Reno County on the State Fair Board, and that did not pass. So if anybody had been lobbying to Topeka about that bill, I would urge you to consider staying on it and, and bringing it up again year after year, until we get that. I believe that that's important, so that we have a local voice on a state board that is such an economic driver in our town, that we don't have any local people on currently, and we haven't had for just a little bit, and we saw firsthand the, I'll say nasty surprise that came up with the almost closure of the racetrack. Also, the first racetrack event is going to be on April twenty-sixth, I think this is our time to put up or shut up, and everybody show up and buy your ticket and, and watch the races, because if we're going to prove that we want the racetrack to stay open and stay in Hutch, then that's how we do it. They're going to be looking at ticket sales, and beer sales, and concession sales, and all of that, so this is our opportunity to prove that that model works, and that we appreciate that event being here in town. Personally, I have a sitter, I will be there, I haven't told my husband, in case he's watching, but that's our plan that night. Every Saturday, I do drive around town, I, I go check the parks, check the progress on the new installations, I cannot wait for the new equipment at Grandview, and the new equipment at Herman and Helen Bunty Park, it looks really cool, and there's still a lot of work to be done, and that the crews are working hard to get everything in the ground, and then after that, after the equipment is in, they have to come back and do ground restoration, fix sidewalks, plant things, all of the, all of those to kind of bring it back up to our standards for our parks, so I encourage the public to just continue to be patient as they work through all that, hopefully we don't have any bad weather that would delay those, so. And I do take note of properties that need mowed, commercial properties, I help residents put in complaints on properties that need mowed, et cetera, so, and then the next week or the week after, drive around and see what was done, so if you guys put in things, residents, if you put in complaints to see, click fix, I check the map, I check the reports, and then I kind of go spot-check around town, as long as my kid is asleep in the car, I'll drive to the moon, so that's what I do on Saturdays, and I'm done.
All right, Scott?
Okay, so I was involved in the, I guess, process of, of finding the new city manager on both sides, as a community member, and then on, on council, and I just want to thank everyone that was involved. It was a long process, and I think everyone did a great job, and I know it was, it took us a long time to get there, but I think we've, we've landed on a great candidate, so I would like to welcome Enrico and his wife, Sarah, to our community, and, and I know it's going to be a great, great thing for you to get here, can't wait for you to arrive at the end of May, and, so we can get going on making this Can't wait for you to arrive at the end of May, and so we can get going on making this community great. So, and then the other thing, the, I've watched the video on the, on the new bike park. That's a really, really neat project, and I think they did a great job getting that completed. I wanted to, again, congratulate the HCC Lady Blue Dragons on that victory. And then I also wanted to, one of the other things that I was kind of on my agenda, taking on city council, was the collaboration between the county, the city, and everyone involved. We had a meeting last week, and we were, all, everyone was in the room, commissioners, South Hutchinson, the city council, and I just really thought it was great that we could collaborate and focus on, all of us moving in the same direction, instead of different, I always called it silos. And so I was really glad to see that happen. And then I want to echo on the racetrack on the twenty-sixth. Phil Nightingale, they've done a great job getting that track ready, and I want to invite everyone out there to come, come see the race. I think it's gonna be a great thing for our community, and I think, and then one more thing on the click fix, I actually have done a couple of the click fixes, just to kind of see the process, and it's really, it's really neat to kind of see how you actually implement something on the click fix and how fast you get a response that's been resolved. So you get an email coming back that it's been addressed, so I think that's all I have.
Great. Mayor?
I have one thing to say.
Yes.
I forgot on my notes, I didn't write it down. On Avenue A Park, when we was boating that in, I was thinking to myself, as a citizen, they're picking on us. We're closing one side of town, which is south in the town park, making it go four more now early. Well, I was down there when I used, when I first a candidate here, and I seen Avenue A Park, they do leave a lot of stuff down there. It's a mess. We spilled, spent a lot of money on that park. And if I didn't see it for myself, I'd have said no to this, because you don't close the other parks at the same time. But in this entity, I have to do what's best for me, and what's best for me, they're right. They have a lot of people living down there, a lot of dirt, a lot of trash, a lot of things. So at this point, I think it was the right thing to do, to close it an hour early. First thing came to my mind when they said, that's why I asked the question, because you're closing the rest of the parks at eleven? And then they said, no. Well, first thing come to my mind, you're picking on us again. They weren't picking on us, they did their job, and at this point, we need to do something at Avenue A Park, and I think that was the right decision. Thank you, mayor.
You bet. I had a few things, most of which were already covered. I will say that the, the discussion around having a permanent board member from Reno County, it never got out of committee to be voted on, so, you know, apparently...
It is, it is an open meeting.
Yeah. Oh, no, we can show up.
So people can be there or attend the meeting, yes.
Of course.
I think that the, the purpose of the statute, I guess, was to have that be a voting member of the committee, a permanent seat, in the same way that the other seats are designated to certain industries, ag, tourism, et cetera, and then some of them are geographical seats. So I, I think there is a lot of value in the way that it was written, and I'm just like so many zombie bills that come back year after year, I hope this is one of them that they continue to introduce.
Yeah. Needless to say, I was disappointed. Might write another letter this year. Anyway, I did go take a look at the racetrack yesterday, because I was curious. That racetrack has never looked better. There was a whole lot of work done to that, so let's support that. Again, I'm not gonna repeat everything that everybody said, but the bike park, went out there the other evening, there were lots of people using it. It's not finished yet. I'm anxious to see what it looks like in the end. It's a good location, it looks to me like. I'm excited that maybe some of those teenagers will have something to do, because most of the folks that were there were teenagers.
Yeah.
And they tried to get me on a skateboard, and I passed. So, you know, I could have, I could have done it for about two feet before I fell. Saturday, the twenty-first of September, Southwest Brick Town Fiesta. If you would like to support that, contact myself, or possibly Steve Garza, and we will get you in touch with the right people to be able to support that. Welcome, Enrico. Thank you for being here, and, and Mary Grace, what do you have?
Just to circle back on a couple of things that council has said, the weeding grass is becoming a process and a problem. We don't do this to punish citizens. We have our ordinances. Just to give you an idea, over the last three work weeks, so the last full three work weeks, we've had over seventy complaints already brought in to the community, to the city. So our process, we receive the complaint, one of the staff will go out, and then from there, if it's warranted, we will send and mail a letter to afford the resident ten days to fix and abate the nuisance. That process, you know, to notify them and give them ten days is a state statute, state law, that's not something the city has set up. And then once that ten days has lapsed, our staff has to go back out to identify if there needs to be the mower that's sent out, and the city has put out a bid in the beginning of the year to contract with a mowing service. So that is done through a process of bidding. It's not that we randomly choose who we're going to send out to do this. This is a bid process early in the year. That fee, and plus, as you can see with all the staff time, that's where the administrative fee comes in. And so, again, I tie that in to let you know how taxing that process is for the staff. And as far as mowing, it's something that we're not out driving around saying, who can we see? You know, that's not something we're striving to do, to punish any of the residents, but we do have the ordinances for a reason, and we ask that if there's challenges, there's community and entities that are willing to step up to help. I've talked to a lot of different schools and churches. But also, shamelessly want to take an opportunity to recognize the fact that we are also in the process of hiring through the city for seasonal workers. We are looking for seasonal workers to work at Fun Valley, at the zoo, zoo education interns, the golf course maintenance workers, the golf course, the golf shop assistants, lawn care mowers. We're looking for all kinds of seasonal workers, and we welcome you to apply. If you're not sure how to do it, call the city or come in, and the Parks Department, we're here and willing and want you to come and work with us. Couple other things I want to let you know, is we are excited that we've hired a housing, filled our housing position. Carissa Paxton will be starting April twenty-second, and we know housing is a concern in this city, and so we will have, again, a person dedicated to help with that role, so we're excited to have her come on board. You've mentioned the bike park, that is still something that has to be finished. We anticipate a dirt track and things, and that opening will probably be, official opening will be into June. Looking forward to June, a couple of things. There is a women's conference that will be coming up on June sixth, so I want you to, people to be aware of that. That's a great opportunity, a great networking opportunity for folks. But finally, with Enrico, I welcome him, but I also will be working with him to try to get our schedules, where we will set up some town hall meetings in June, depending on availability in a couple of different places and what council has. Many issues you've raised, as far as, you know, listening to about different ordinances, we want to talk to, engage in a work-study and talk to the community. We want to also introduce Enrico. We want to talk about, you know, maybe late-night council meetings could be one of the agenda. We'll work on the agenda topic together to come up with something, but it'd be an opportunity for us to get out into the community to do a lot of the work that we've been trying to do, as well as bring and introduce Enrico into the community. That's something we'll put on and get some schedules together for June, a couple meetings. So I want to make sure we'll be aware of that.
I've got a question for you on the low-bid contractor. I don't even know who it is. Is it owned by anyone on city council?
It is not.
I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
It is not.
Is it a Hutch or Wichita company?
It's, it's a Hutch company. Yeah.
Mary Grace, just one thing you said I'd like to clear up, late-night council meetings.
Thank you for clearing.
That's, that's, Councilman Richardson had mentioned that he wanted to address the issue of holding your council meetings at night, so maybe that's a topic, maybe we could put out there during the town halls and as we talk to the community.
The word "late" was what was there.
So, and that's all I have.
Okay. We have a couple of executive sessions. We need at least a five-minute recess, and then how long do we need Tom for this? He's not listening.
He's not listening.